Good afternoon. Jonathan Carr, Head of Development Management, Lead Officer for today's panel in deluge substance.
Afternoon. Robin Coghlan, Principal Planning Officer.
Hello. Gillian MacLeod, I'm Head of Development Services in Highways and Transportation.
Good afternoon, everybody. councillor Katie Dai from Kilimbecon Seacroft Ward.
Hello. Good afternoon councillor Asgar Khan, councillor for Bermitoff in Richmond Hill Ward.
Good afternoon, everybody. councillor Jones substituting for councillor Brooks this afternoon.
Good afternoon everyone. councillor Annie Maloney, Beethen-Holbeck Ward.
Afternoon councillor John Garvanay, Horstworth Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Peter Carlisle, Carveling-Farquhley Ward.
Good afternoon, Lewis Foote, part of the plans panel admin team.
Hello, everyone. I'm councillor Colin Campbell.
Good afternoon councillor David Blackburn, Farnley and Worley Ward.
Afternoon, I'm Robert Finnegan. I'm a councillor for the Moly North Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Simon Tury from the Putty Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Barry Anderson, Edlin-Worford Ward.
Good afternoon, John Stone, our team leader, Design and Projects.
Good afternoon, Andy Booth, clerk to the panel.
Good afternoon, Pippa Clum-Treavally, Principal Legal Officer and Legal Advisor to panel today.
Good afternoon, Davy Feeny, Chief Planning Officer for Leeds.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Now, moving to the agenda, item number one, please. Thank you, Chair. Under agenda item number one, there are no appeals against a refusal of inspection of documents. Under item number two, there's no exempt information on today's agenda. Under item number three, there are no late items. There is some supplementary information which has been published and distributed for agenda item seven, which is the application on Sain Lane at Huntslet. Moving on to agenda item number four, could I ask members if they've got any interest to declare? Councillor Maloney.
It's non-bikinery, but representing Beethen-Holbeck Ward. I just thought it was worth noting that I was not on the panel the first time Ellen Road came, as best to represent my residence and being privy to a lot of the consultation. But as we are looking at the consultation, so not voting on anything substantive, I am sorry, as panel member.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number five, apologies for absence. We have apologies from councillor Brooks and councillor Jones's attending substitute today. Thank you, Chair. Okay, thank you. And as councillor Maloney has said, we are here to look at the consultation only from Leeds United, but we will get on to that as the third item listed today. Thank you, everybody. So, item number six, agenda item number six, minutes of the previous meeting, which was held on the 12th of June 2025. First of all, I will go through those, excuse me, for to check that members accept those as a true and correct record, and then I will take any matters arising, okay? So, on page seven of your pack, that's page one of the minutes, any items of accuracy on page one of the minutes? Page two? And page three? Okay. Everyone accepts those as a true and correct record of the last meeting? Okay, thank you. Any matters arising from those minutes? No? Okay, everybody, thank you. So, we will move straight on then to agenda item number seven, which is a site at Sain Lane in Huntslet, which was deferred from the last panel. And I will hand over to Robin. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So, this scheme is brought back to City Plans Panel with a revised scheme. The changes include improved section 106 benefits and revisions to the design of the north-west corner of the building. Members should have seen the supplementary report that was circulated earlier, and this responds to an 11-page letter of objection on behalf of Braems Group PLC that was received a week of July. So, my presentation will include a recap of the site and the proposed scheme, an explanation of the changes that have been made since the last panel meeting in May, and a summary of the late objection. So, recap. A small triangular site of 1.0.16 hectares. It's situated between Carlisle Road, Sain Lane and Sain Road. It's to the south-west of the city centre. And there's a vacant site to the east. It's an area of transition with taller buildings towards the city centre and lower-rise buildings to the east. And currently, the existing building comprises a two-storey element at the apex of Sain Lane and Carlisle Road, and a single-storey element to the rear. And what's proposed is an 18-storey building of 164 flats, and it's brought back to Plans Panel after being deferred. And the minute stated deferred to allow officers and the applicant to give further consideration to the concerns raised regarding affordable housing and green space for the possibility of considering structural design changes to address these concerns. So, the applicant has made some cost-saving changes to the design, and as a result, has been able to make an improved offer in terms of affordable housing and the financial contribution towards green space. So, on the slide, I've set down what the planning benefits on offer at the May panel were on the left, and then what the planning benefits are now. And really, the only two changes are affordable housing. The eight affordable dwellings are now offered, and the green space contribution is increased to just under 148,000. So, a bit more detail on the affordable housing. There'd be eight affordable dwellings constituting 5% of the total. There'd be a pro-rata mix of sizes to reflect the scheme as a whole. They'd be provided as affordable market rent, which basically means they'd be managed and made available for rent by the management organisation. Rents would be charged at no more than 80% of the local market rents, and that would be inclusive of service charges. And arrangements would ensure that they're offered to people in need, including council nomination rights for people on the Leeds Housing Register. A bit more detail on the green space. Previously, £31,860 was offered, and that was the maximum, subject to viability. Just a point of clarification here, the officer report had previously said the requirement was 206,000, but this didn't take account of the onsite green space of 250 square metres. So, taking that into account, the recalculated requirement is 147,987. And the applicant has agreed to this requirement figure, which constitutes an increase of £116,000. So, cost savings have been made by replacing the inset balconies and fins to the western nose of the building. So, you can just see the fins there at the top. And then each of these had a balcony of roughly a metre deep. So, those fins and the inset balconies have been taken away. And then in the proposal, there's Juliette balconies, but they obviously don't allow people to go out. And the fins have been removed. So, visually, the western elevation still has visual interest from the stepping of the elevation. But the removal of the balconies and the fins does remove detail from the articulation of the form. So, the applicant has updated the CGI's of what the building would look like. And in terms of objections, we have received objection from another resident of the Climate Innovation District, and her main objections are that the building is too tall and has a slab-like appearance. In response, our view is that a significant precedent already exists, as outline permission has already been given on this site for a similar-sized block and in a similar form. And also, immediately across the road, a 20-storey building has been permitted on the points cross development. And as can be seen on this slide, and also the next one. Oh, sorry, I'm jumping ahead now. The detailed treatment of the north elevation has been improved to provide depth of visual interest to counter the slab-like feel. It has deep window reveals and a variety of panelling and textures. So, to summarise, the revised scheme will provide some affordable housing, albeit maybe not the most affordable type, but nevertheless affordable. And it will also provide a significantly increased green space contribution. But the cost comes with a cheaper design to the western nose of the building, and members will need to decide whether this design change can be accepted. I have set out the views of the design officer in full in my report. In his opinion, the revised treatment of the western nose of the building is poor design. It's not acceptable for a prominent aspect of the building. However, the view of planning officers is that, looking at the scheme before you now for decision, rather than focusing on the change in design, the scheme is acceptable overall. And in terms of the main tests of the council's design policy, P10 of the core strategy, we consider that the proposal before you is acceptable in terms of its visual context. So, looking westwards over Air Park from above the site, you can see the character of the emerging visual landscape with several point blocks. This is Air Park. And here you can see a CGI of the 20-storey block that's permitted as part of the points cross development. And you can see this site in the foreground there. And, I mean, given the scale of the building opposite, it would be difficult to argue that the building's scale and form is out of context. And let's not forget that the developer has done what members asked at panel in May and reviewed the scheme design and its finances to enable provision of affordable housing and provide the full contribution toward green space. And also, not forgetting the scheme will regenerate a brownfield site with 164 new dwellings in a sustainable location. So, just finally, the late objection that we received from Braems. Braems are really concerned about the impacts on their ability to run their business. Simple practicalities. Will their vehicles still be able to access the rear yard without disruption? And on noise and air quality, have the sources of noise and air pollution from the operation of Braems been properly accounted for? And is the mitigation in terms of the proposed building envelope and mechanical ventilation sufficient? As I've set out in my supplementary report, we think the answers are yes. And we're satisfied either now or with things that are still to be arranged with offices, that the development will not unduly hamper Braems' operation. So, this is subject to the recommended conditions. And as such, the recommendation is still to defer and delegate to the chief planning officer for approval, subject to conditions, completion of a satisfactory road safety audit, and the completion of a section 106 agreement. So, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We don't have any speakers for this application, but we do have the applicants here if we do have any questions for them in the course of our discussions. So, first of all then, do members have any questions to officers about this? Councillor Carr.
Thank you. I'd just like to go into that green space calculation a little bit, if we can, and why there's the difference between the two. Because one of the things I think I'm correct about, and maybe you can confirm this, is what we only calculate as part of that is usable green space in some way. Green space, we wouldn't accept a highways verge, for instance, as green space. So, are you able to lay out which areas we've included? Because I'm not entirely convinced that all of the green space on site is what we would call something that's usable for recreation, and whether all of it's now been calculated, and is that where the difference comes from?
Yeah, I mean, the area of the site that-
Chair, sorry to interrupt, but wouldn't it be useful to put the plan up?
Yeah, I'll see if I can find one. So, this probably does the trick. The area that's accounted for is basically just the frontage here to Carlisle Road. And so, it's definitely open to the public. You've got areas of seating there and there. It's if it was part of a larger scheme, I think this type of provision would be included, in my opinion. And it's not a lot, it's 250 square metres. So, we felt that was the correct way of assessing it.
Just briefly, I accept that it's a very small site, so they couldn't put a rolling garden or a children's play area in that. I'm just not sure that what we've done is created a bit of a highways verge with a couple of benches thrown in to be perfectly plain to you, and then ask to accept that as green space. Completely understand that if we scaled that site up to 10 times the size, then we would accept that percentage as green space. But we do have that clear view that green space has to be usable, and I'm not convinced just putting a bench on a narrow piece of green space is there, myself. But that's for members, I guess, to come to a view of, isn't it?
Okay, councillor Dai, are you next?
Thank you. My first question was exactly the same as councillor Carlisle, so I'll ditch that one and go on to my second one. Lewis, can we look at slide 13 again, please? Thank you. So, my question is about the balcony. So, I understand what's changed about that front section. But the two sections that go behind that, do they have Juliette balconies? Thank you.
They certainly did not have inset balconies. So, they're not being taken away. It's only to the corner of the building there, not to these sections. They're as before, yeah.
Sorry, yeah, I do appreciate that. I just can't remember what they were like before. Do they have the same as the one that's now changed will have?
I mean, you can see, although there's a slight bit of fin on that end there, which there isn't there. But, sorry, I've Lewis is doing it for me. I need to check the plans for that, but I don't think the there's certainly no loss of inset balconies.
No, that's good, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Finnegan, next, please.
Thanks, Chair. There's no evidence that EN1 and EN2, both important policies from my point of view, are satisfied. There's no evidence to substantiate that they will be delivered other than by condition. And my question really is, you know, the flats are built. Who toddles along at that point to make sure that they do deliver on EN1 and EN2? And is it realistic to suggest that enforcement are going to stick a stop notice on this particular building if they're not? Why haven't we got evidence of how EN1 and EN2 are going to be satisfied at this point? Why are we conditioning it away? And this has been raised time and time and time again, and I've asked for calculations which have never been produced at this point. Conditioning it leaves it to enforcement. That's really not appropriate, in my view. So, why haven't we got evidence that EN1 and EN2 are to be satisfied before we make a decision?
My understanding is that the design is such that EN1 and EN2 will be satisfied. Our condition's always on a two-stage basis, so we've already made sure that the design will meet the policies. But then we need to make sure that when when the building's built, it also, you know, I mean, things like fixtures and fittings, they're not always known what exactly they're going to be at this stage. So, we need that sort of follow-up in terms of the condition to make sure that things are built that meet the standards that have been agreed. So, there are reports that have been submitted that set out how policies EN1 and EN2 will be addressed. But the conditions are to make sure that it's implemented to meet the design that's been agreed.
Yeah, just to reiterate that point, on page 42, it does mention that we've looked at the reports submitted. And as was discussed quite in detail last time round, I think, on sustainability, the applicants were able to demonstrate quite a significant improvement over and above our normal requirements for this particular scheme. And as Robin says, the intention is that the conditions will just ensure that that happens. Perhaps there could be more information in the report extracted from their assessments and submissions, but that was discussed at the last meeting, and I think members were pretty satisfied with the levels that were being achieved. Clearly, the conditions then need to follow on to ensure that that is implemented.
Very brief. Don't want to labour it because I haven't laboured it in other meetings. So, when you say meeting 10% of the building's energy through ASHPs is not demonstrated by evidence, what do you mean? To help in this, page 27, 6.35.
That might be an earlier comment from the climate and energy officer in response to the initial submission. I mean, sometimes that will be addressed in later information received by the applicant. And I think, as I say, that was discussed at the last meeting. But certainly, the schemes that we did receive in terms of the reassessments did satisfy members at the last meeting and officers before that. So that we were happy with what's proposed, and it was significantly better than we would normally accept.
So, there is evidence?
There is evidence. The applicant's here as well, if you wish to query-
Thank you. If you'd just like to, do you want to ask your question again, councillor Finnegan? And then if you'd just like to address that point, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. I'm grateful. Right. You're generating 10% of the builder's energy through heat pumps. So, can you give me the figures? Can you give me the figures of the total that you'll need to run this apartment block? And the machinery that you're going to generate 10% of it from? So, the specific figures. Apparently, evidence exists. I can't see it. Can you give me it?
This is covered in section 12.6.1, that 39% of the building's energy would be from air-source heat pumps.
With all due respect, that is, somebody give me percentages. What does the total building need? And what machinery? I'm sure you're being entirely and utterly accurate at this point, but I'd like to see the figures. How many kilowatt-hours do you need? How much of this has been generated by the 10%? Have you got those figures?
Sorry, councillor, I don't think we have those figures at hand today. I think what we do, sorry councillor, what we do have obviously is condition 12 and condition 13 that relates to, obviously, prior to the commencement of the development, that we have to submit further reports in terms of the detailed design and from a renewable energy point of view.
Okay, thank you. If you'd just like to stay there, in just in case any more questions while we're discussing, thank you. Councillor Campbell, you were next.
Can I just explore the noise issue a little further? And I appreciate what the report says and the supplementary. But if you recall, I think it was Mabgate, wasn't it, when we were down in Bermitoff? We did spend a long time discussing the possibility of a third party complaining. Sorry, when flats were built, a third party, a resident complaining about the activities, that already take place on-site. And it seems to me that in that case, we we had fairly robust assurance that that wouldn't be possible. So, I'm asking the question. Is that assurance available in relation to this block?
I think it is. I think we've been given reports by the developers' noise consultants that have done their own noise survey. that have done their own noise survey. It takes into account... It's a 24-hour thing that takes into account the noise from braves and from other business operations in the area. And the noise levels that would be apparent where the building's being built, there's sufficient provision of, you know, the design of the building envelope is such that those noise levels would be mitigated. There's also mechanical ventilation, so that when, on the warmer days, people wouldn't necessarily have to open their windows. They can rely on the internal ventilation. And, I mean, the key thing is that our environmental health officer checked against our own standards that the noise levels would be within our own parameters. So we are satisfied that...
So just to be clear in my mind, our environmental health officer believes that the ambient noise level in, okay, let's say, one of those corner flats, level seven, just a pick one out of random, the ambient noise level in there would be below, below the required figure. Below the norm, for want of a better word. I'm trying to think of the technical term, but of course I can't.
I mean, there's kind of noise levels that we set as being the standard.
Okay, then, is it below that?
It's below that. So people shouldn't have to open their windows, basically.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions that members have? Councillor Siri?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. In the supplementary pack on page 7 at the top, it says we were waiting for a response. And hopefully, we've got a response regarding the sweeping path. I wondered if you've had a... Got an update? Thank you.
Yes, we have had that. Lewis, did you manage to add the drawings? These are them. So do you want to talk us through these?
Yeah, so we've got the swept path of a refuse vehicle entering and exiting the lay-by. And then there's a... Is there another one, Lewis? There's a swept path of a vehicle entering and exiting, or entering the access point, which is for cars only. So we are happy that that is doable. The fine detail of that, to ensure there's no overrun, would be dealt with at detailed design stage in terms of putting that lay-by in.
Okay, any further questions from members? No? Okay, I'll move on to comments then. So any comments from members on this application? There's a standoff between you. Councillor Carlisle?
Thank you. You've probably had my comment, but I'll go in. I'm yet to be convinced, shall we say, that the original assessment of the green space contribution was... Wasn't correct. It is very debatable whether they are usable green spaces. Certainly more the bit to the south of the site, as we see there, rather than the portion to the east. I do understand that it's a very small site. But I'm not convinced we're getting ourselves in a tricky position where somebody could put a bench on a grass verge and persuade us that it's green space in the future. So, that said, we've got more than we had before. So I'm unsure what I'm going to do about it. But I think we just do need to be very clear about that. And I think we set a bit of a dangerous precedent, actually, accepting that.
Councillor Campbell? Yeah?
I think I'll take that a stage further because I don't believe that that is usable green space for the number of people who will be living here. Today's a good example, actually. Not everybody sits in a room that's at sub-zero temperatures because we've got the air-conditioning going full blast. But if you... I use this argument, if you come home in the evening and it's a warm day like today, you don't want to sit inside. And you've already said, the thing about taking the open balconies out and putting Juliettes in is it doesn't allow people to go out. And I think we need usable space within the parameters of the building. I think this idea that developers have adopted and we've fallen for in many ways, that you can buy out of this, we'll give you a contribution and you can spend it somewhere else. Well, my memory of the area is there isn't really somewhere else to spend it on that's convenient. And so the people who live there are going to have something of a journey to find a green space to sit out. And I agree with your interpretation. This is really just a glorified grass verge. Okay, we've got a tree on it and a bench. But there really isn't enough room, in my opinion, on-site. And I know we have this argument about on-site and off-site. But there needs to be something on-site. We have a policy, for heaven's sake, that you provide green space, but we're not doing it here. Okay? You knew I was going to mention affordables. Or, in this case, less unaffordables. Because it's 80% of market value. So that's not really affordable, that's just less unaffordable. We have a policy. I say this every single time. We have a policy in relation to affordable units. And we spent the best part of, what would it be? Two hours yesterday afternoon wringing our hands complaining that there weren't enough... We weren't providing enough affordable, well-designed units. And we come here and we're asked to set that aside. Now, I often ask myself this question, and I occasionally ask developers, but you never get a proper answer, in my opinion. If this scheme is unviable, why are you doing it? And you're only doing it because we will give you a subsidy. You will buy out of the green space. In effect, you'll tell us you can't produce the affordable units, so we'll give you a cut... In effect, that's a subsidy. We're not asking for the car parking standards we'd ask in Marley, for example. So we're, again, we're giving you a sub. And you're still saying to us that you're going to put a huge, great block on what is basically a low-rise industrial site. And you can't make money. I'm mesmerised at that particular thing. But I think the real clincher for me was page 12, starts at 5.2 and finishes at 5.4. When we talked about looking at the scheme again, and we talked about providing more affordable units, or at least some affordable units, we didn't say to you, "Go away and dumb down this building." Now, I happen to be, for my sins, I happened to come in this morning and listen to... And I've forgotten the acronym, but I think it's the Royal Society for Something Architecture, Rosser or Rossborough or something. And then today, they'd announced the shortlist of their design, for their design award this year. And I came in and had a look, and there's some really interesting designs, including some really interesting designs of blocks of flats. And a absolutely fantastic design of a prison. Now, if we can design a prison that looks really nice... I was almost going to say, "You'd be pleased to go." But looks really nice, it's well-designed, it's open, it's easy access, it's good on the eye. Why in heaven's name can't we design a block of flats? You know, quite frankly, this is a poor design. It's poor quality. It doesn't meet policy. How can we possibly agree?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Blackburn, you had your hand up next.
As councillor Campbell said, we spent much of yesterday afternoon, or early evening, discussing this yesterday about affordable homes that aren't affordable, even though they're called affordable homes. Quite honestly, this is not on this scheme. The green space is still not good enough. As councillor Carlisle says, it's a glorified grass verge with a form on it. It's not doing anything for anyone that's going to live there. And it ain't going to do anything for area at all. So I just, if it isn't viable, the scheme isn't viable, full stop. And I can't support it.
Okay, councillor Finnegan, you had your hand up next.
Very briefly, just to really confirm the same. It doesn't satisfy policy in terms of affordable homes. I don't think it satisfies policy in terms of green space. And I've yet to see the evidence that it satisfies policies on EN1 and EN2. So I share that scepticism and won't be voting for it.
Okay, any more comments from members on the application? No? Okay. So do officers wish to clarify anything further?
I mean, just to mention one thing, that an outline scheme already does have planning permission of very similar form and footprint on the site. So, you know, we can't really step back from what's already got permission in terms of the amount of space around the site.
Yeah, if I want... You want me to do the summing up, Chair, at this point? Or have we got further queries?
Sorry, councillor Campbell's just put his hand up again.
We get this thrown at us on a regular basis. The whole point of an outline application is that's what it is. It sets some principles. It doesn't set in stone that you build this. And I think that's the point. We're not... Nobody's arguing about the principle of a housing development on this... Sorry, a homes development on this site. I'm arguing that this, the quality, design, layout, et cetera, this part, this element is not, does not meet policy and does not meet the standards we should expect with design, et cetera, for developers who come to Leeds. And that's it. I'm not arguing about the housing principle.
Councillor Dai?
Yeah, it's just a point of clarification. If we're being told we can't step back from that, what exactly can't we step back from taking councillor Campbell's comments into consideration?
I mean, one of the key things is the footprint. And the footprint is very, very similar. And, I mean, that does limit the quantity of green space. There's no doubt about it. There's obviously much more freedom in terms of what do the elevations look like and, you know, the actual intrinsic design. But in terms of the footprint, we've got very little room for manoeuvre, really.
Any further comments? No? Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just to sum up the discussion then. Clearly, there is a concern around green space in terms of the provision on-site and whether that's adequate, whether that should be included within the calculations. I mean, obviously, as Robin ran through, there is a very significant uplift in the actual contribution in terms of the amount as well, in terms of a commuted payment. There is reasonable proximity to airpark of this site as well. It is a city centre site, so you would expect to see a very significant proportion of a constrained site. And there is a previous permission with a footprint covering very similar, if not more, of the site. In terms of other concerns, obviously, affordable housing was discussed.
Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. But the air-conditioning is working really well. We're really cool here. But the fan is impeding my ability to hear what Mr Gas saying. So could you just lean forward a little bit, please?
Certainly, yeah. It is difficult in this room. I think all the microphones are very quiet at the moment. In terms of affordable housing then, another concern raised by members as to whether what is now proposed is still adequate is obviously an increase over the amount proposed at the last meeting, which was none, I believe. There is still the mechanism of a late-stage review within the recommendation and would form part of a section 106. So there is the opportunity to have more affordable housing should the scheme prove to be more profitable than is currently envisaged. The scheme was subject, obviously, to the review by, an assessment by the district valuer. And unfortunately, in terms of whatever you think about the affordable housing offer, it is part of the national system to calculate affordable housing in this manner. Clearly, there are concerns about the design, notwithstanding that the developer did go away to look at the design in terms of trying to increase the amount of affordable housing and the green space contribution. Those concerns remain as well. From a planning officer perspective, we do feel that the scheme is supportable. And because of the level of new dwellings being proposed, the regeneration of the site, and the fact that the concerns from the existing occupant of the neighbouring site can be addressed, we do still support the application as it stands. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So, based on the summary it provided, moving and moving to the recommendation on page 11 of the pack, do someone want to move the motion? No?
Just to help out, Chair.
Yes, councillor Campbell?
To help out. I will propose that, given the points we've already raised, I'm not going to go through them all again. We are minded, we are minded to refuse the application, but are prepared to defer making a decision on the refusal for officers to have further discussions with the developer to address the issues we have raised. And quite frankly, if, full stop, if they don't address the issues, then I am minded to propose that we refuse. But as I said, we know it's a housing site, we know it, it's okay. I think we're trying to get it over the line, for want of a better word. And I think that's possible with appropriate discussion from, and, yeah, discussions with officers, I think.
Okay, so you're proposing that we defer the decision forward to cycles so officers can, hopefully, with the developer, answer the issues that we've raised? Okay, councillor Blackburn? And then, did I see your hand over? Councillor Blackburn first, yeah?
Well, I'm not really into deferring it again. I think councillor Campbell makes a good proposal there. You can keep on deferring things and deferring things. And at some point in time, you've got to decide yes or no. But I think it's a sensible idea that councillor Campbell has come up with. So I'll second that.
Okay, so that's an alternative proposal that's been proposed and seconded. Councillor Khan, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just to, before we continue voting on councillor Campbell's proposal, I just want to ask legally, where do we stand if we do defer and mindfully we put a clause in for refusal if he comes back again?
Thank you. That was something on my mind that I was going to ask after comments. Thank you.
If you just want to put the motion forward, that it's a motion to defer and come back with that further information, so you can then reassess fresh at the panel when it returns? with that further information, so you can then reassess fresh at the panel when it returns, that's fine. If you're looking at minded to refuse and defer, really you're also wanting to come back with some possible reasons for refusal, which I would suggest is almost putting the cart before the horse. You're asking for this information, but also wanting to come back with some reasons for refusal, so are you asking for deferral to, to get this information and then reconsider that?
Sorry, with the best will in the world, I, what I said is, we are minded to refuse this, but, and then that my proposal, which is, we are prepared to defer, that's just a statement.
Yeah, so the proposal is to come back in one to two cycles, once officers and the applicant have been able to address the points raised? Yeah. Okay, so we're all clear on the proposal that's on the table now? Thank, thank you for, for clarification. So we're all clear on the proposal on the table. Do I have any more comments on that before I move to evoke councillor Finnigan?
I mean, if they are coming back, can they bring the figures that I asked for on EN1 and EN2, so that we can see the evidence in front of us, rather than have this debate about the evidence does exist, the evidence doesn't exist as well? It's part and parcel of the whole process. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, we will include that in the, in the questions that need to be answered. Is there anything else you want to come in on before I do the vote? Oh, sorry, councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Just after receiving the legal advice, I'm happy to support councillor Campbell's proposal, the motion to defer, but to take out the refusal out of that proposal. Thank you.
Yeah, just to bring to members' attention, there is obviously the possibility of an appeal against non-determination of the application by the applicant, if they don't feel that discussions can go further than they already have, so just to bear in mind, I mean, the officer opinion is still that an appeal would be successful, but clearly members are able to make a judgment of their own.
Sorry, with the best, with, with the best will in the world, we know what the officer's view is, we've expressed a view, the applicant will do what they want, but if the applicant, I suppose if the applicant is sensible, they could get a, they could get a decision from us within, well, one or two cycles, which will be much quicker than going to an appeal. So, I, I understand what you're saying, but that's a decision they make.
Come in, sorry.
As the officer dealing with this case, I'd like to be a bit clearer on what the, what we're supposed to be negotiating with the, with the applicant, because there's a lot of unhappiness about the green space, but I, I can't see how we can get more green space provided on, on the site, and that they are providing the maximum according to our, our policy in terms of the, of the contribution. So, it's just what other, what are the other concerns that members want us to see improved with, with the, with the applicant? Because I'm, I'm not very clear on that.
Okay, and well, first of all councillor Finnigan wants EN1 and EN2 figures, so that's one of the things, we've got that councillor Finnigan. Councillor Carlisle, you want to make a comment, but also councillor Campbell, do you, is there, after that, is there anything you want to come in with, with regards addressing these questions? Councillor Carlisle, I'll take it first.
Thanks, Chair. The only thing I was noting is, I think the applicant was keen to have a, a word or two. I don't know whether officers would recommend that, however, it could be that they have a way forward, that they might like to suggest that members may wish to be interested in.
Okay, sorry, I apologize, I was looking at here and I didn't see you with your hand up at the back, I apologize. Thank you councillor Carlisle, I was, I was busy looking at the new proposal. Yeah, okay, if, if you can add some, some clarity or answer some of the questions, absolutely, please do come in.
Thank you, councillor Carlisle. I appreciate you obviously looking at members rather than looking down here, because we were at that point of the, the meeting. I think really it was, it was picking up probably on where Robin was actually going there, because obviously at the last committee, we were asked to go away and look at the affordable housing offer and the green space offer, and then obviously in doing that, that's triggered a bit more debate in terms of the design and the, and the approach from that side of it. So I think what's kind of, would be really helpful for us is just to understand that clarity in terms of what are we looking to provide here? Because from a green space point of view, that was the amount that we were asked to provide as a policy compliant contribution, which obviously that we have agreed to as part of the viability appraisal. In terms of the affordable housing, obviously we've increased that, but we still have the late-stage review, so obviously that can increase if, you know, if, if values increase or construction costs reduce as well, so there's still that protection from that side of it. So I think, just so that we're really clear and we can really understand the position, it's if we can understand where, where members really want us to focus on. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, thank you. I had councillor Daye, and then if members who have made the proposal and second can give me, give us some more steer on the issues they want addressing, that would be helpful. So councillor Daye first.
Thank you. My, my comments were, were about those issues that, that we want addressing. So, one of the things that's been mentioned is the, the fact that the affordable housing doesn't feel like it's really affordable housing, so perhaps that's something that, that could come back to us. And the other thing is, the, the green space contribution has been described as a verge with a couple of benches. Perhaps we could have some assurance, maybe with some CGI, some photos, that that's not what it is, that it is actually a quality usable piece of green space?
Thank you. Yeah, I think some, I think some CGI's which will show us what the green space will look like and how it can be used would be really helpful, so that members can, you know, if it's not just a grass verge, members can understand how that will be used and what it will look like, absolutely. Okay, does anyone else want to come in on the points of clarification? Councillor Campbell?
Well, I thought I'd made it clear what I thought.
But I just don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, that's all.
I'll do it again for the benefit of those who didn't pick it up. I think the first point relates to the, the first point on the report, which is the design. What is the point of the council having a design section, who advise on quality design? We've talked about quality design endlessly, for office, for other planning officers just seem to say, well, yeah, but we're discounting that. What was the point? The affordables, I, I am, I am still not sure, that if you are putting a huge great block on there with all those flats in, which are going to generate a significant amount of income, that you can't make a profit. And I'll say quite clearly, if it's not viable, you shouldn't be doing it. It's just not good enough, and, you know, it's a combination of things, isn't it? It's the design, it's the lack of affordables, it's the green space which is an afterthought. That's the whole point about design, isn't it? You would design the green space as an integral element of the development. What you've done here, what you've done here is stuck it on the end, because it's, actually that's the bit that's left. I, I don't think I can be clearer, I think this is, I, I am really disappointed with this, and it should be better.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. I just wanted to make sure that we had everything for officers and the applicants to go away and look at before we, we move on. I can see your hand up councillor Campbell.
Thank you. Just wanting to add to my point, I think one of the things to be completely fair to the applicant in this, I, I disagree with the changing of the calculation of the green space, I'm afraid. I think we probably calculated it correctly originally, and that we wouldn't cast this as usable. Very much like to see if there's an area where we've calculated something similar as this as usable alongside those CGI's, because I'm, I'm not sure that counts as green space. As that, I would like to understand a little bit further, because I know we do have the requirements for 20% of the site to be green space, as well as then additional contributions, and just to make sure I'm very clear on what we should be asking on that, on, on this site. I have also had the opportunity now to have a look at that outline permission, which is for a much smaller building, I think it's a, a number of floors shorter than this, and on that there appears to me to be an understanding of more green space. It says in the report, the outline, that the applicant is well aware that they need to provide 30% affordable housing. I'm not sure whether it's the same applicant as before, and it may not be the same investor, but they obviously may have been aware at that point, but it doesn't appear they continue to be aware and continue to be able to deliver that. So, I, I'm not sure, as well of officers' comments around the outline, that it gives me any, any view that that has made a decision on what we have in front of us today. So I, I'd like a bit more clarity on that, but I must say, in, in many points, I'm, I'm asking for clarity from officers on, on what's changed since last time. I do add to Colin's point around, I, I'm not sure that the design should have been in some way cheapened in order to get what we expected to have, and I'd much preferred the previous scheme in terms of the design. I think there's more that could be done on this site.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Are we, have we got a, a note of the issues to be looked at? We're, we're okay with that? Okay, right. Thank, thank you, everybody, I just wanted to make sure we had everything before we moved on. So, I'm gonna move to councillor Campbell's proposal, and councillor Blackburn has seconded that proposal. So, can we take a vote on that, please? So by show of hands, can I see members in favor of councillor Campbell's proposal? So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, that looked, 11 people in favor, that looks unanimous to me. Just can double check, no one, no abstentions, no against, no one's changing their mind? No, okay, that's great. So that is unanimous, that councillor Campbell's proposal has been carried, so we will bring this application back in one or two cycles, once those issues have been addressed, okay? Thank you, everybody, and thank you for coming answering questions as well. Okay, right. Agenda item number eight then, moving on, the pre-application for 177 Kirkstall Road. So, we'll just have a change round of officers, and then we will take that presentation. Okay, thank you, everybody. We're ready to continue. So, if I can hand over now to take the report on 177 Kirkstall Road, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Chair. So it's a pre-app inquiry, so I'll just hand over to the...
Sorry.
The developer team, architects.
Do the developers want to come forward, please? Can the applicant come forward? Okay, thank you. If you want to go through your proposal, please, in the pre-application, and then we can take any, any questions from panel members, thank you.
Afternoon. I think we're just gonna do a quick introduction, just so you know who we all are. Ellie Philcox from Ewan Kelly, I'm the planning consultant acting on behalf of Forshaw Group.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Lyndon Forshaw, CEO and founder of Forshaw Group, the developer.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jonathan Miley from Reform, where the landscape architects on the scheme.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Matthew Ollier from Ollier Smith-Wait Architects. So, the site is located to the west of the city centre, in the Kirkstall Road Renaissance area to the west of the city.
I suppose, you're probably all very aware of this area, the Kirkstall Road, but we sit within the corridor where there's three of the consented schemes at the moment, one of which is on site, and we are the west of the most scheme, so we form a gateway along this corridor into the city centre.
So we've had a look at some historic maps. So this was historically an industrial area, that's, it's had industrial uses on it for a long time, this site. The site's currently cleared. One of the more prominent uses was the preservation ironworks, and we've managed to find some old photos of what that used to be like. So looking at local character, so to the west of the site, we've got the viaduct, and then the old Tanneries Building, and then to the east, we've got the listed Chinese Christian Church. We do sit in flood zone three, there has been some new flood defence work completed, but it still clusters zone three, so it can flood to two metres. So, moving on to the design strategy, so we've looked at this key gateway site, effectively splitting it into two zones, so we have a, a larger zone, a taller zone to the Kirkstall Road elevation, and then a lower level to the rear, but maintaining a north-south permeability and a link east-west. So the layout and scale, so we step from six stories up to 12 stories along Kirkstall Road, and then back down to six to respect the buildings either side, and then we're five and six stories at the rear. So the form of the buildings, they're kind of taller, slimmer onto Kirkstall Road, and longer, lower and linear to the rear. In terms of uses then, so we've got a mix of one, two and three beds, and then at ground floor, we've got a mix of amenity spaces and retail and car parking.
The layout of the site has resulted in a series of quite distinct spaces. From a landscape and public realm point of view, we've got a central garden, a new square off Kirkstall Road, a series of green links through the site connecting Kirkstall Road eventually to the river, one of which forms a key active travel route.
So we've got five key design principles that have shaped the proposals, so one is creating new from the foundations of the past, the second is creating a community landscape, the third is creating common ground, the fourth is create critical mass to support the uses, and the fifth is create intergenerational living. So moving on to the proposals in a bit more detail, so at ground floor, we have a mix of shared living and amenity spaces, which include things like gym, swimming pools, cinema room, residence lounges. We've also proposed nine small retail units for independents, and then we have a lot of undercroft parking and cycle parking. And then moving up on a typical upper level, so we have a mix of one, two and three beds, and we have 7% affordable provision within there.
The illiterate landscape plan chart's to give you a bit more detail in terms of the character and nature of the spaces trying to create, so there's large green space in the centre of the site, which becomes a garden, both for community and the local residents, and then the main square off Kirkstall Road, which we activated ground floor by commercial, and then the routes through the site, and particularly the active travel route, which connects Kirkstall Road to the green space, and then ultimately the river.
So moving on to the context elevation, so the top one is the Kirkstall Road elevation, where we step from six stories up to 12, and we've used varying brick tones to break those buildings up, and the lower elevation is from the rear, where we're at five and six stories. This is a CGI then of the Kirkstall Road elevation, showing how we step in height and we step in plan, so we can create some dual aspect living on those corners, and then animate the street. Context elevation's cutting through the site then, so the top one is looking west, showing how we step from five stories up to 12, and the bottom one shows the viaduct road elevation, where we step down to respect... where we step down to respect the existing tanneries building.
So this is a CGI showing that key active travel route through the site. So on the left eye, you can see that route meandering through with people walking and cycling, and then connecting into that central green space, trying to create a very green character.
So just looking at the design in a bit more detail. We've looked at four typical historic building typologies that have informed the new buildings. So we've got kind of lower-scale storage sheds that are lightweight and lower scale. We've then got a warehouse typology, which has a darker brick. We have a mill typology, and then we have a kind of gateway building typology. Looking at those in a bit more detail, so the landmark gateway building typology has a distinct ground floor and then double and triple windows, with an arch window head at the top, and then a lighter weight top to the building. Then have the mill typology, which is lower in scale, with an arch base, a regular window pattern and a more detailed parapet. The warehouse typology, which uses a darker brick, and it's a pared-back version of the mill typology. And then the storage shed typology, which actually becomes our energy centre on-site, is two stories and uses a lightweight metal cladding.
And then we've got our second principle, which is about creating a community landscape. So a series of key spaces within the development start to create that community feel, creating spaces for both the local residents and the wider community. So we've got that green heart space, we've got the main square of Kirkstall Road, and then those neighbourhood routes that are prioritising pedestrian and cycle routes. And then CGI of that central space, as you can see, very natural character. We're looking at bringing formal and informal play into that space, and it's very much a generational space that we're trying to create, very overlooked and very safe and secure. And then the third principle about creating that common ground. So the key space here is that main square off Kirkstall Road. You want to activate that ground floor and become an extension of that commercial ground floor use, or that residential amenity use at ground floor, and also creating the ability for pop-ups to happen in that space as well. And we can see there a CGI of the main vehicular route through the site. And although we're having to create the two-way vehicular route, it's part of the Kirkstall Road Renaissance area plans. We're trying to make that as pedestrian as possible.
Then the fourth principle, create critical mass. So we've got 509 apartments in the scheme, but we need that to activate these ground floor uses that we have and support things like the independent retail and opportunities for pop-ups and the like. So that's another CGI of this central square, which can be used all-round and by all members of the community. So principle five looks at creating intergenerational living. So we're looking at different house types focused on different user groups. So young professionals have open plan living, families get a larger living with an outside balcony. And then the empty nesters, we've got a split kitchen dining and living space. All dwellings get a winter garden, so everyone has their own private amenity space.
And then we've got the central garden, which, as I said before, is intergenerational, with play both formal and informal, and a variety of seating opportunities, integrating lots of planting, sort of biodiverse planting, and also rain gardens into the wider public realm.
And then just moving on to site access and servicing. So the main east-west link is a two-way road. We then have a one-way circular loop round and through the site for servicing. We then also have these north-west connections. So to the east, we've got a combined pedestrian and cycle route. And the secondary route to the west is just pedestrian, with the opportunity to link through to the south for future connections to the river. And then we've just looked at some key views here from the surrounding streets, which show the sort of lower visual impact from most areas. And then, so yeah, just to conclude, the final slide just picks up on these five design principles that we've tried to follow through all elements of the design. So creating the new from the foundations of the past, creating a community landscape, creating common ground, creating critical mass to support those ground floor uses, and creating intergenerational living. Nearly.
Okay, thank you. Very interesting, absolutely. Do we have questions from members? Councillor Campbell, councillor Carlisle and councillor Jones, was that?
Just a quick one.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you just talk me through the winter gardens again? And did I hear correctly and say every flat will have one?
We've got it. Next, that's it. Yeah, so the winter garden effectively works like a recessed balcony. I think we have a preference as designers to avoid putting external balconies on buildings, because I think they get misused, they get used as external stores, and then make buildings look unattractive. And I think in this northern European climate that we live in, they maybe don't get used as much as they could do. So we design them as a recessed internal winter garden. So you have a glazed screen that separates it from the living space. And then the glazing externally can open up fully, and the lower half of that window stays fixed. So when the windows are open, it works as a balcony. When you want to use it as more amenity space, you can, you can close the external windows. We've developed them in other schemes. They get used as a home office, they get used as a little breakfast room, and then in the summer they get used as a balcony.
Thank you. Quite a lot of hands went up at once, so I've got a list. So just bear with me while I take everybody. Next, I had councillor Carlisle.
Thank you, Chair. Generally, it's a pretty positive scheme, and they've done some good work with the green space on there, and I like the look of the buildings. The one thing I'm a bit concerned about along Kirkstall Road, with all the previous buildings there, the one thing you couldn't see ever from Kirkstall Road was that there was a river and a lot of green space behind it. I'm a bit concerned we're going to end up prolonging that and just ending up with quite a large expanse of buildings along Kirkstall Road, and you not to be able to see what is some fantastic green space that you're creating that unfortunately might be a bit hidden. So I am still a bit worried that Kirkstall Road will end up feeling like an urban valley away from actually what is lovely green space that you created. And I just wondered if you could talk me through why that is, and whether you've thought of anything different around that.
I think if I start off from a built form point of view. We have made a conscious effort to create two visual and physical connections through to the river, which are pedestrian, they're visual, and they'll also provide a cycle connection through. I think at the same time as well, we're obviously aware that Kirkstall Road is a heavily trafficked vehicular route into the city centre. So we did want to create an element of screening with the buildings to create better quality spaces behind those buildings. I don't know if you want to add anything on the landscaping?
I would just add that, yeah, I think the buildings on Kirkstall Road add an element of containment to that central green space, and indeed the square as well. And that helps define them, gives them that active edge. They're overlooked, and it makes them feel more safe and secure within the development. Just to sort of emphasise what Matt was saying around those very clear visual views into the site. I mean, you can see on this plan that the built form is arranged on the site, so that you do, as you're walking down Kirkstall Road, get very, very long views through the site to be able to sort of glimpse that space and enable you to sort of lead you through it into it. And we're making sure that those spaces are off the key routes within the site as well. They're not sort of hidden or tucked away, or in a leftover space that's not got a building on it. They're within and part of those key routes down towards the river.
Should I probably just add as well, along that Kirkstall Road elevation, so we set our buildings back so we can accommodate a wider pavement. So we've got space for pavement and extending cycle routes along there. And there's also generous space for planting onto Kirkstall Road to create a better environment, I think, for that Kirkstall Road elevation.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Day.
Thank you. A number of points from me. The first one, if you could go to slide 49, please, Lewis. Thank you. That's it, yeah. So I have concerns about what looks to be quite a dark and intimidating treatment to the car parking area. I can see that on the picture, you've got daylight, you've got lots of people about. But I kind of feel if it was a dark winter's evening and everybody around is in their apartments with windows, curtains closed, I think that would feel like a really unpleasant space to walk or cycle down. And if I had a cycle storage space that was kind of further away, and I was having to get to it on my own, I would find that really quite intimidating. So I wondered if there are options that you haven't told us about for lighting, or for perhaps a more kind of transparent treatment to that, so that you could be seen? Although I don't even think that's particularly ideal, seeing as what would be behind it would be cars. But that's my first concern, is about that space. My second one is a question about flood risk. So it is in an area of flood risk. We are in a rapidly changing climate, and despite all the fabulous flood alleviation work in the city, is it a site that's potentially vulnerable? And if so, what could potentially be the impact on businesses if we're attracting independent businesses to come and take units on that site? My third question is, can you give us some more detail about what exactly is the definition of affordable housing? What are the plans? I assume it's on-site, but given the discussion we've had on the previous item, how affordable is the plan for affordable housing, I guess is my question. And then my last one is... ...report, paragraph 60? No, sorry, I'm in the wrong place. I'm on paragraph, same page, but paragraph 58, about the issues around some of the north-east facing apartments. I wondered if you could add a comment on that? Thank you.
Just before you come back on that, just on councillor Day's first point. One thing I've been starting to look at and ask questions about is design agenda, and making sure that we don't have any spaces on-site, which, basically making sure that the site is safe for everybody, but particularly women and girls as well. And that's one thing that we have started to look at. And myself and councillor Maloney have been discussing that yesterday as well. So I wonder if you could, as part of answering number one, if you could address that? Because what we don't want to see when we get further down the line is us asking questions. And we have done this on previous applications about certain elements that don't feel safe within a site this big. So if you could address that as well, that'd be great as part of that.
I'll try and answer the first few questions, then I'll probably answer and pass the other two to the architects. So just on your first point about flood risk, yeah, you're right that the site is within flood zone three. As you'll be aware, there's been new flood defence work being completed. But as I understand from our flood risk consultants, I guess the system in terms of defining what land is within which different flood zone hasn't been updated as a result of that flood defence work. So as I understand, I think the expectation is that over time, that the flood zoning of the site will change, and it will come out of zone three. However, as I understand, that's not going to be in the timeframe within which we're bringing forward this application. So what we have to do from a planning perspective is design the scheme as if it is in zone three, as it is currently defined. As part of the application, and what is ongoing at the moment, is a piece of flood modelling work. This is very detailed modelling across the site. And I say that's not complete yet, but that will be submitted as part of the application. On affordable housing, discussions are ongoing with registered providers about, I guess, whether they're able to take space within the scheme. It is our intention, subject to those discussions, that affordable housing provision will be provided on-site. The affordable housing provision, I guess, the definition of that is in line with national guidance, as I know you discussed previously on previous application. But yeah, it's certainly our intention that will be delivered as on-site provision, subject to those discussions with registered providers.
Just picking up on the detailing then, that we can see on that CGI. I think we're obviously bringing this to you partway through our design process. So the scheme is evolving as we speak, so there is further detailed design that we're working through, which will involve extensive street lighting. The challenge, I suppose, with the ground floors there is that we've got car parking predominantly behind there. So we need natural ventilation. We also need a certain degree of permeability there from a flood point of view, because of where we sit. In terms of this end of that street, there wouldn't be a requirement for people to necessarily walk down to this far end until the scheme gets connected to other schemes that might come forward to the south. So there are, the key residential entrances are all focused around that central square for the rear blocks. So that is well overlooked and well-trafficked from a pedestrian point of view. But we'll look at that in more detail, how we treat that and how we get it kind of looking right and feeling like a safe space to be able to walk through. Just touching on the apartments on the north-east corner then. So I think all the apartments that we have that sit on a northern or a north-eastern elevation, we have corner apartments on that elevation also, so we are providing elements of dual aspect. There are some that sit within the centre of the plan that do just have a north-eastern aspect. But it's a very limited number in terms of the whole quantity within the scheme. And I think one of the key things driving the layout of the site was to try and give every resident a high-quality green space to look out onto. So the layout and the forms of the buildings at the rear, and where we've positioned green space, hopefully gives people a good aspect, whatever the orientation of the apartment. Does that cover all the points?
Sorry, I would just add as well, in terms of security, we won't have a full-time security guard as such, but there will be a 24-hour concierge manned office on-site. So that is obviously an added benefit of living there.
I would also, just on the designing for everybody. We have, historically with schemes, worked with make space for girls. So we're aware of when we, particularly from a public realm landscape point of view, when we're designing those spaces in terms of social spaces, play spaces, that we're making sure they are inclusive and suitable for everyone and not discriminatory.
That's brilliant, thank you. Look forward to seeing that as it develops. Excellent, thank you. Councillor Blackburn, I had you on my list next. Oh, you're okay now. Okay. Councillor Khan.
Thank you, Chair. Can you please just walk through with me or explain to me how you're going to be connecting the connectivities with existing sites and also existing communities around this site?
So we've obviously got the central vehicular route, which is the route that's defined within the Kirkstall Road Renaissance area, which runs through all the other schemes that are consented along this corridor.
Sorry to interrupt. You had a slide where it showed the connectivities from different areas for this site. I think it's further along in the presentation.
Yeah, so the two-way road that runs east-west is part of the Kirkstall Road Renaissance area. Now, obviously, we don't have control over the neighbouring site, but the site beyond that also has permission and includes that road. So in the future, the idea is that as a combination of all these sites coming forward development, that road exists as an additional route with a sort of relief away from sort of Kirkstall Road, I suppose. That connects into Viaduct, that is Viaduct Road, isn't it? Yeah, that connects into Viaduct Road, which is the main entrance into the site, which then ultimately, obviously, to the south sort of has a route which would lead you down to the river and the canal. That would be how you would physically get to the river and canal and connect to those leisure routes at this point. But what we are doing from a north-south point of view is we're creating two very strong routes from Kirkstall Road down with the potential to connect into the site which sits between our site and the river. We don't have connections to the river at the moment, but we want to enable future connections if and when that site comes forward. And then those two very strong connections to Kirkstall Road create those opportunities then to be able to connect into that wider community over Kirkstall Road.
Sorry, should just point out as well, and it's not indicated on this map, on this drawing, but to the south-west corner of the page there, we do also have the opportunity for another pedestrian connection there to connect onto Viaduct Road, which again is something that we will do.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Jones and councillor Gavani next.
Thank you, Chair. This site used to be called Woodhead Springs for many, many years. It produced springs and it also did some forging. So my concern about this is when you start to dig it up, have you done any work on, is this contaminated land? In fact, I know it will be contaminated. That is an absolute certainty. My concern is when you start to dig it up, where is that soil that will be contaminated, where is that going? And I think that's a very valid question. With all engineering plants, all this will have seeped into there. There will be pits on that site. What work have you done to understand what is there before you have put the application in?
Well, we were buying the site off your housing group. They undertook full remediation of the site before deciding not to take it forward. So that has been validated. So as it stands, that they have fully remediated the site.
Actually, I don't think that's answered the question. So can we have a look at what that report says? Because I'm fairly certain that there will be contamination there. And I'm concerned that if it's just moved, it's where that soil ends up and what pollution and what damage that could do elsewhere.
Well, as I said, your housing group provided a remediation strategy, which was approved by the council, I presume. They then undertook remediation in accordance with that strategy. It was then validated that it's been done. So obviously, I can't tell you whether we moved any spoil to or whatever, but as I can say, it's been validated to the council standards. And as far as I'm concerned, it's remediated. We are doing our own ground investigations though, you know, we're not relying on theirs. So, you know, that process will continue. And, you know, should we find anything, then clearly that will be dealt with in accordance with council policy.
Okay. I was going to say, that's something that we can look at if you want us to, councillor Jones, as to, yeah, can we put that on the list just as to when that work was undertaken, where that was moved to? Is that okay, if we can find that out?
I was just going to add to that, just to say, obviously, you know, in line with your validation requirements, there will be a need for us to submit a contamination assessment as part of the application. So all of that will be covered. As Lyndon said, there was obviously that remediation that had taken place. I understand there is a small sliver through the site around the culvert, which there wasn't, I think that remediation wasn't fully able to happen due to those kind of restrictions. But that will obviously be covered in the report. But that work and that kind of testing is ongoing by our consultants at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Gavani, you're next.
Thank you, Chair. Going back to the flood risk of that site, paragraph forty-two says that the flood risk assessment needs to include breach modelling to demonstrate that the development will be safe should the FAS fail. If the FAS failed and we had twenty fifteen again, all your ground floor would be flooded, be under about two to three foot of water. That is not a safe site. Those businesses across the front would be wiped out. Householders would have serious problems getting insurance. What work can be done to alleviate that, to ameliorate those effects?
Yeah, so I guess, as I said before, the scheme's been designed as if it's within flood zone three. So in line with the flood risk sequential approach, which is set out in national guidance, different use classes have different kind of levels of vulnerability in respect to flood risk, which is why there's no kind of residential accommodation at ground floor. All of that is above ground floor. What we are required to do is demonstrate, I guess, safe routes of escape, which we'll do as part of the scheme design. So to make sure, I guess, if there was a flood incident in any part of the site, then people would be able to get out safely. So that's something that we will need to do and demonstrate as part of the application. But say the uses which are within the ground floor are those which are defined to be less vulnerable by national policy in respect to flood risk. Does that answer your question or?
I think just to add, as with other schemes that have been consented on Kirkstall Road, we'll also design the public realm and the levels in particular to create routes for water to escape safely. So we've obviously got the two very strong north-south routes and we've got the central green space. So what we'll do is we'll work carefully with levels to allow water to escape, well, back into the river essentially, should the site become flooded quickly, rather than the site just holding the water.
Just to add to that, if that incident was to take place, as I guess described in that paragraph, that is what the flood modelling that we're undertaking at the moment is to identify. It's to identify if there was an incident of that nature, it will identify, I guess, which areas within the site would be, I guess, more vulnerable, which would be less vulnerable, where that flooding would likely to take place, I guess. So then we can design, as Johnny said, in terms of landscaping and levels across the site. So that's, you know, designed in an appropriate way so that that water would then leave the site.
You only have to remember that twenty fifteen sort of forced Tyson Cropp's arm on this to vacate the site totally. It wasn't worth remediating the damage done and carrying on working there. So it's a concern.
Yeah, no, we fully acknowledge the challenges with the site and the need for us to, you know, very clearly demonstrate and set out within, as part of the planning application, all of that information with regards to flood risk.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Councillor Siri, next, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. During the presentation, you mentioned a cinema, yeah, but ten minutes' walk, there is an existing cinema. But then you mentioned about social housing, you're potentially all hitting seven percent. Is there no way of increasing that and getting up to, you know, near a ten percent?
At the moment, we've identified a single block, a detached block for the affordable. Like I say, we're ongoing discussions with RP's to take that basically. In terms of going beyond that, there are viability challenges in delivering this site, you know, in terms of the construction, the values, all the green space we're providing. So in all honesty, I think we'll struggle to go beyond the seven percent. In terms of the cinema, it's a resident cinema. It's not a commercial cinema. It's just part of the amenity offering that we're going to provide for residents.
Okay, thank you. Any more, I've got nobody else on my list. Oh, sorry, councillor Finnegan, my fault. I apologize.
Thanks, Chair. I'm trying to focus on page four, also page nine. So it's about standards and sizes. It's about the housing mix at this point. So at page one four one, we have you, in terms of one-bedroom apartments, almost up to the maximum. Our preferred target is ten percent, so you're way over on that. Two-bedroom apartments, forty-three percent. You're more or less bang on at that stage. In terms of three-bedroom apartments, you're way under. And you're not even close to target. You're not on the target at two-bedroom apartments. You're under our target. And in terms of the space provision, which is over the page one four two, on one bed, we expect thirty-eight point six and thirty-nine or brackets thirty-seven, which is interesting. Sixty-one for a two-bed, you're on the minimum. On a three-bed, seventy-six, you are just above the minimum at this point. Now, that seems to be a scheme that is looking to maximise profit and ignore really our best intentions of H4 and H9. Can you convince me I've got that wrong?
In terms of the housing mix, we just, we as a developer want to obviously build what we can sell and what we can rent. So our experience is that the three beds are the most difficult to sell. They're always the last to rent. There's least demand for those in reality. And that's not just in our experience in Leeds, but same for Manchester, Bolton, Salford, other places we develop. So as a developer, we don't want to build something that we've not got demand for. The one-beds are always first to rent and sell, followed by two-beds, like I say, three-beds are the least in demand. And that's just from experience. And we build, you know, lots of these. We've actually done a housing needs assessment though as well, and that supports our experience in terms of demand. So obviously, in terms of viability, we want to make sure the scheme goes ahead. And a part of that is making sure we develop what's, you know, to satisfy the demand.
Okay. Do you want to come back, councillor Finnegan? You still got your microphone on.
I'm curious still about the size because the proposed size is thirty-eight point six and H9 minimum, for one bed this is, is thirty-nine or thirty-seven brackets. It just seems exceptionally tight. You've gone to the minimum, rather than that as a starting block, you've basically said, right, how can we scale everything down to make sure it just about hits the minimum? Or in some cases, fails hits the minimum. I'm more interested in why your apartments are more spacious than the minimum that's set down.
Well, we will make sure they do comply. This isn't obviously a planning submission as such, but all apartments will meet minimum spare standards. Again, just in terms of viability, it's more viable for us to build them at the smaller end of the spare standards than the larger end. It doesn't translate into a higher rent, which again just makes the scheme tighter in terms of viability.
Just to add in terms of apartment sizes as well, I think it's helpful to also look across about the amenity space for residents, which is provided across the site. There's obviously a number of kind of shared spaces available to use in terms of like a private dining room, the cinema we talked about. So I guess, looking at the scheme in respect of obviously the private space that people have within their apartments, but also that space available in terms of that shared space, which will be available for them to rent and, you know, and use as well.
Yeah, I think Ellie makes a good point there. I think it's worth also pointing out that the way we've designed the apartments, we've designed them as open plan living. So they're fire engineered. So we've taken away corridor and circulation space. So you do get really good-sized living spaces and bedroom spaces, which are the key spaces within the apartments. So although the regulations don't ask us to fire engineer the whole scheme, we are fire engineering the whole scheme, which has the additional safety benefits obviously.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the question for, or move on to comments? No, oh, oh, councillor Khan, you have a comment. Right, okay, we'll move on to comments then. Questions are finished, we'll move on to comments. Councillor Carlisle and then councillor Blackburn, councillor Campbell, yeah.
Thank you. In terms of the scheme, I think it's a really good scheme. I like the way it's been designed. I think it fits in fact with what is turning up in this area of Kirkstall and starting to make a, I won't really call it the Renaissance corridor, whatever it's called, but it's starting to become a neighbourhood and have a look of its own. I do like the way you've designed it for the open spaces. I think it's very well designed. I think some of the amenities you're adding, some of those community spaces you're adding, internal and external are very good. I'd really like to see a bit more when you come back, if you don't mind, what it looks like from Kirkstall Road itself. Just so, I think what you are providing is a bit more of a look-through and a bit more of a greener street, but I'd really like just to have that confidence around that. I do like how you described, actually, there's that alternative walkway that will be there that means you don't have to use Kirkstall Road at one point, which would be really useful. There's obviously a lot of detail to come later on. And I know you've had questions around that, around the flood risk and various things. But I think it's a really positive scheme on a site and I'd be very happy to see it come forward.
Thank you. Councillor Blackburn, next.
Thank you. I'm somewhat bothered about the sort of mix. I think really we need some more three bedrooms. And I know when we've talked about this on Kirkstall Road, we said it's near the city centre. Well, where you're getting there, you're near, well, you're outside at city centre as far as I'm concerned, when you get up to Canal Road. But I mean, quite honestly, you'll have to justify that to us at a later date. But one thing I'd have to mention, which I was going to ask a question, but I got guzzumped on it, and that was to do with what councillor, I was saying about this, where the undercroft parking is. I mean, I've got to say, it looks a bit iffy. You know, November night, when there's a football match on telly and everybody's not looking out of the windows, it looks a bit, it looks a bit iffy to me for walking down. So anything you can do to sort of liven it up or make it look more friendly to people, I think that's needed. I mean, and, you know, anything to increase safety for people. But overall, I've got to say, it looks a good scheme.
Okay, thank you, councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. I think we all appreciate this is a pre-app. And I wouldn't like you to leave thinking that, as some developers do, that we've nodded it off. But generally, I'm quite impressed with what you've brought forward. I was fine on until you started trying to rationalise having units that perhaps would be below our minimum standard. I think when it comes back, I would say to you, it might be best if you could be policy compliant as far as possible. Because as you will have guessed from the previous discussion, I tend to be a bit grumpy and argue about these things. That said, I think, you know, I think we appreciate it's work in progress. So you're going to go away and look at it again. Can I just sort of make a couple of comments in relation to what I think are two halves of the development? So you've got your the through route. And I think while we were talking, I was pondering about how the through route that runs parallel to Kirkstall Road, and it will eventually run all the way down Kirkstall Road, I think we want to ensure that that simply becomes, doesn't become a shortcut. And I think probably we need, or I feel I would need some indication about how you might make it difficult for that to happen. And I think if we look at the Kirkstall Road frontage, the units on the Kirkstall Road frontage, I think the mix seems reasonable to me. And I know you're providing amenity elements for, I presume, which will be available for everybody who lives onsite, not just the people on those blocks. Uh, but, and, and the initial drawings you've shown us of initial artist impressions look interesting, let's put it that way. I would just flag up that in effect, if you're coming in from the Kirkslend and you come under the viaduct, this is the gateway, this, your corner building will be the gateway building to all that development that goes all the way down there. Um, and we, we talked in the previous discussion about a good design. And I think this is an opportunity for your design team to have a really good go at that. Uh, because it will be a landmark building and, um, we're, we're not shy of a large landmark building, uh, as long as it's quality. Um, I, I like the, uh, the green space, you've got plenty of green space in there. I'm, I'm always open to a bit more, but, you know. Uh, and I think that I like the idea of the central square because you, you seem to have adopted the principle that you'd make it a place to live in, a home, rather than somewhere you just live. Uh, I like that idea. Um, obviously the parental through routes in some time down the future will be useful. I would pick up what Katie said. Uh, one of the things we thought about on site was the, the undercroft parking. Now, we understand because of the flood risk element, why you've got to have, effectively you can't have residential on the ground floor, uh, or count at the moment. Um, but that does create the potential for, for really blank faces. And I think we would be looking, or I would be looking anyway, for how you brighten up those spaces, how you make it feel more welcoming, how you make it feel that it isn't simply just a blank wall and it's a canyon down which you walk. Generally, I think this is a positive proposal and hopefully we can get some, um, worked-up drawings in a, in a couple of months and maybe move it forward.
Praise indeed there councillor Campbell. Excellent. You liked the scheme, excellent. Um, right, any more comments before I move to the, um, uh, the, the, the questions that we need, we need answering? Everybody okay with that? Okay. So page, uh, 147, um, excuse me, um, sets out the questions that we need to answer, so I will read those out now. Uh, so do members support the approach to housing mix, bear in mind comments that have been, we've, we've made? I'm going to, okay, bear in mind comments that have been made, do we generally support the, the housing mix? No? Yes councillor Carlisle?
I think we've always stuck to regardless of the target, uh, uh, greater than 10% three-beds. Very reluctantly, I will say, on that. And that has normally been in the city centre and I think we're, we're not necessarily in the city centre here. So I think we might be a little bit stricter in what is a residential community than we would be on a city centre block of flats, shall we say.
Okay, so we want, we want to see that, that increase then. Okay, have we got that, Jess? Yeah, we're, we're okay, okay. We've got that, okay. Um, second question, do members support the proposed layout, scale and massing architectural approach and materiality of the development?
Can I say Chair in general, because I don't want you to come back and bite us and say, you agreed, you agreed this layout at, uh, this is a pre-app.
Yes.
In, in principle, uh, that looks fine, but obviously it, it's going to need a bit of tweaking.
Yeah, this is a pre-application and, and obviously we're here to ask those questions, make those comments before it goes to the full application stage, absolutely. Uh, okay, thank you for those comments. Uh, do members consider that the emerging approach to landscape and public realm is acceptable? Yeah, yeah, and, and obviously comments that we've made about safety, um, you're councillor.
Yeah, that's just, that was just what I was going to say, yeah.
Okay, we've got that Jess, yeah, about safety and yeah, okay, we've, we've got note of that. And do members consider the location and emerging design approach to the, uh, energy centre is appropriate? Yep, the smaller building, yep, okay. Uh, right, thank you everybody. Uh, thank you for coming and presenting the, the pre-application to us. It looks really interesting. I do go up and down Kirkstall Road quite a lot, so I'm really, you know, I can see the other buildings emerging. So it's really, really good, uh, that the, the second, uh, kind of, uh, phase there is, is now sort of underway and we're looking at pre-application for that. So, uh, it looks really interesting. Uh, thank you. Uh, we look forward to, um, to coming back to, to panel again and, and looking at the full application. Thank you. Um, okay, we'll just swap over, uh, in fact, no, it's half past three. Uh, do you want a very quick five minutes comfort break? Uh, and I won't make you work through, um, so we'll have a quick five minutes, uh, while officers swap over and we get everybody in place. Okay, thank you. Okay, everybody, um, thank you for coming back together. Uh, we are now going to move on to agenda item number nine, uh, pre-application Leeds United Football Club, uh, with the Elland Road development. Um, can I just let members know that we are only here to look at the consultation, uh, information that the club have undertaken? Uh, there is, uh, a live public consultation going on at the moment with regards the full planning application, which has now been submitted, so we cannot discuss the actual detail of the application. So today, uh, we are just looking at the, um, at the outcome of the, the consultation, um, uh, meetings that have taken place, events that have taken place, uh, and that's, that's what we're discussing. Okay, just to let everybody know. Uh, I'll now hand over to, to Matt before we, we take the presentation.
Thank you Chair. It's just really to expand on the Chair's comments there. We, uh, the planning application, the full planning application, uh, went live on Monday of this week. So we are now on day four of the 91-day planning process. Therefore, in truth, we, we still have a lot to look through at the moment as officers. We're, we're working through that sequentially and we're working with a number of external and internal consultees and statutory consultees on that point. Um, but in the meantime, as regards, um, the pre-application, that's now in, in effect ended. Um, so the scheme that you, uh, members were shown on the 8th of May, um, forms the main bulk of the planning application that's now in. Uh, members of the public can make comment on that, um, as they require. And, um, the out, one of the outfalls from the 8th of May meeting was members wanted to hear the final detail of the public consultation process. So that's why members of the football club and their associates are here today. Um, they've also brought along, um, the three-dimensional model, um, that was taken along to the public consultation events and that will be available for you to view at the rear of the site, uh, the rear of the room. And also that was, uh, I, I understand it part of the, um, model that was used in the wind tunnel testing, which has accompanied the planning applications. So that's just for members' information really, just to expand on what Chair's point, there's a very limited scope here of what we're here to talk about today. Um, officers obviously can answer questions as required, but this is very much, um, with Leeds United to explain to you what they've been doing over the last month. So I'll hand over to Tim Waring and Lucinda Eden at the back of the room. Thank you.
Thank you Matthew, uh, thank you Chair. Um, very briefly, I'll just do some brief introductory pieces. Um, as we said on the 8th of May, we were just starting the consultation, um, meaningfully at that point, which followed on from the council's executive decision to, um, agree to, um, some land deals with the, uh, with the club. Um, prior to which we weren't able to undertake any consultation. Um, you kindly invited us back, uh, to explain the outcomes of the consultation and Lucinda will talk you through those today. Um, I suppose taking a football analogy, we are now in the first half of the, uh, the, the match. Um, we were warming up previously, um, and Lucinda will talk you through, uh, some of the work, work that took, took place during the warm-up and some of the outcomes, both in terms of the consultees, uh, and the engagement that we did with local stakeholders. I'll pass over to Lucinda.
So you're passing the ball to me. Yeah, very good. Thanks to you all for, um, inviting us back for us to give you a factual update on the consultation. Um, I've just got a few slides, I'm sorry they're a bit text-heavy, but I have tried to include some images of the consultation activities. Uh, you'll remember when we came in May, we had a list of, um, dates that we intended to go out and consult. I, um, would just want to kind of say now that we didn't manage to stick to those because they increased dramatically in the time. We got a lot of requests for, from different groups and we tried to say yes to as many people as possible. So it, it actually became, uh, more extensive than, than we first, um, said. Uh, I just set out some of the consultation principles for you on this first slide. So, you know, raising awareness of the plans, giving people the opportunity to ask questions and provide informations were, were the key aspects of what we were trying to achieve during that consultation. But with three strong themes of accessibility, inclusion and being community-centred. So the accessibility element of the consultation, we, um, ensured that at the public consultation, we had a session, throughout the Leeds Disability Hub. We had accessible information including tactile maps and large print materials, and we also had the support of an accessibility inclusion specialist available during that time as well. And when requested, we were able to provide transport for people attending the event. We also, as part of the inclusion aspect of the work, we reached out to those groups that are often underrepresented in consultation activities, such as women and girls, and we had a specialist girl session with the support of Leeds United Foundation, and also reaching out to LGBTQ plus groups through Marching Out Together. We also visited Spider Y wheelchair basketball team in Morley. And we were as community-centred as possible by having events in various different venues across all different times of the day and within communities as well, Elland Road itself. So we actually crossed three wards within the actual kind of pop-up type consultation events that we did. Sorry, this is very small print, but this is a list of all the consultations that we did. So I think it was around 25 different events. Like I said, we did online and in-person events, we did pop-ups, attended community forum meetings, I was in schools, church halls, pubs, they were my favourite, community centres and at Elland Road itself. So we tried to reach as many different people in many different ways as possible. During this process, we also had online activity, so the consultation materials that we had at the public exhibitions and the pop-ups were available online, as was the questionnaire, and we also had a dedicated email address. So, it's one of our very happy people, this is at Holbeck Together in the morning session that they have. So we were able to reach a huge number of people. We sent out 3,000 letters to advertise the public exhibition at Elland Road, and they went out across predominantly Farringham Worthy and Beeston and Holbeck Ward, so it was the residential properties to the closest to the stadium. We had over 1,800 people actually attend one of the events themselves, and 1,374 people attended the public exhibition over the two days that it was on, and 47 attended the BSL stroke quiet session that we held the morning before the public exhibition was opened. So we had different ways that people could feedback. As I said, we had hard copy questionnaires, and 675 of those were returned. I know because I manually inputted all those into the computer. We had, at the time of writing, 381 online questionnaires and around 252 emails. My favourite was that some people did disclose their age on the questionnaire, we didn't ask, but people wanted to tell us. The oldest person to complete a questionnaire was 87, and the youngest was nine, which I thought was great. The younger people filling questionnaires in had the better handwriting. So just a bit of an overview of some of the feedback, and I did go through every single questionnaire myself and read all the feedback. But I picked out these two quotes particularly because I really liked them, because I think they really did manage to encapsulate the mood of the consultation. There was a lot of feedback that people liked, retaining that identity of Elland Road and the four-stand style stadium, and also ensuring that Elland Road still felt like Elland Road. And then there was also a strong theme about Elland Road still being part of the community and strengthening that link. Which takes me on to even more text. I think it's fair to say, we had really good response, but it's important to acknowledge concerns that were also raised. So I've kind of put these into four different elements: transport, community, accessibility and public realm. The main concern that is raised, and predominantly in the community pop-up consultation activities, were around transport. And the feedback was really useful for the team, and we brought it back to the team and to the council, and a significant piece of work resulted from that between our technical team and the council to ensure that they could... ...a travel plan that will be, well, that has now been submitted as part of the application. And this also, like I said, this desire for the community and the club to have stronger links. So the club are looking now at making sure that there can be ongoing dialogue, and that this kind of consultation that we've had now doesn't end because a planning application's been submitted, but that dialogue's continued and that people who live in the community have a way that they can keep in touch with the club and find shared solutions when there might be issues that occur. As I mentioned, we did a lot of work around accessibility, and that was also raised within the consultation, I think I mentioned last time I came, the input from Ingram Road Primary who saw it as their biggest priority, that accessibility was taken seriously. We've worked closely with the disability advisory group, the access officer and the team at the club, as well as our consultant around these issues to ensure that disabled and accessibility services are improved, an increase in changing rooms facilities, which I'm personally very excited about, and better accessible parking. And there was some very interesting comments around the public realm. I think it's fair to say that particularly the supporters of the club who fed into the consultation really want the heritage of the club reflected within that public realm. So that's something that we're looking at, how can that take place and how do we ensure that that strong pride of the club and its past and its future reflected within that? So, just checking on my time. So just going back to the questionnaire, it was interesting to see how many we had, like I said, 670 odd. Seventy-seven per cent of those who responded with a hard copy considered themselves local, and 21% of those lived within the LS11 postcode. I will say that those who completed it online did not represent us as local as much as those who actually handed in their copy. But both the online and the hard copy questionnaires had more or less the same response rate in terms of 97% supporting the increase in capacity, 98% supporting the design plans, and on the whole, 98% supported the club's overall proposals to enhance the stadium, which was, you know, incredibly, yes, did it, guys, you don't lose it, yeah. So, there you go, that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you Lucinda. I have a very quick question. You said that you got responses, you know, the online responses were, you know, not local. Did you have any international responses, because Leeds United do have an international following?
Yes, we did have international responses, and I've had a request as well to do an online session with the sports clubs in America. So we did, yeah. They didn't supply, I did ask for people if they would share their postcodes, and not many people on the online version shared their postcodes. So we had a number from our, our supportive advisory group has got representatives from overseas on the board, so they joined that session as well. Like I said, we've had comments back from America. One of my favourites was, not necessarily overseas, but some people did come on a day trip from, I think it was Rochdale, and they were on a trip to Leeds, so they came to the exhibition and told me it should have been on for a week or so, which was outside of my capacity.
Thank you, sorry, I abused my chair's position then by asking you that question. I was just interested when you said that, whether we're adding national responses. So, do we have questions? councillor Khan, councillor Finnegan, yeah?
Thank you Chair, and thank you for the presentation and the feedback from the consultation, and it's great to see that you have been out meeting local communities, organisations round South Leeds. But you know the ward I represent, Richmond Hill, that does have impact on the football matches day, so we weren't consulted actually, so... But however, going forward, I think we can have that conversation on that as well. My next question is, you know, you highlighted two priorities that came out of the consultation, one was the transport, the other was parking. What was the other main key, you know, points that came out from consultation, and what's going to happen with this consultation, please?
I'll just say that we focused on the wards that were immediately adjacent to the club in terms of the pop-up community outreach. Anybody could attend those events, and they were widely publicised through the city. The public exhibition was also, like I said, 1,370 odd people attended that, and people came from all over the city to come to that public exhibition. So I would say that the entire city was consulted through the consultation process, but we made specific effort to consult with those residents who live immediately next to the stadium. I've just gone back to that query that you had councillor Khan on those points that were raised. So transport, I think, was the predominant concern that was raised. And there were comments around the community and how they can communicate, continue that dialogue with the club, but also wanted to see the benefits. So I think one of the response rates was something like 99%, wanted to see the economic benefit delivered locally. So a lot of work is going on around the employment and skills plan, and how do we ensure that that economic benefit is delivered locally and is really kind of based in that community. Accessibility and public realm were also high issues that were raised. Tim?
So in terms of what we've done with this consultation is, we've listened to what people have said, and then what that has done is helped to shape the response through the planning application submission itself. So if we take the transport issues, for example, the travel planning issues and the desire to ensure that there's no greater impact, for example, in car parking in the local area, that's helped to shape the travel planning. So there's a travel plan that's been submitted with the application which we've been working with your officers on, that now obviously is subject to the consultation. There's opportunities for communities and any stakeholders to comment on those travel plan measures. If there are measures in there that people want to see introduced that aren't there, then it's an opportunity for them to say so as the application now runs its course. And obviously, we'll continue to work with your officers on refining certain aspects. So we talk about, for example, the response to local skills, steering jobs to local communities, and also the social value aspects. I think one of the key areas here that we've identified is that the club itself and the stadium has a very significant social value in the communities that are not only adjacent to, but throughout the city. What we're engaging with your officers is setting up an ability to monitor that social value and to engage with the community on how we can actually continue to improve that social value as part of this scheme. So the consultation is, we listen, we then respond, and we respond in the planning application submission itself.
There's also detailed statement of community involvement which forms part of the planning application, which this presentation is kind of a summary of, and that goes into more detail around those issues.
Councillor Khan, briefly.
Just want to say, you know, well done, you know, you've been out. The reason I mention Richmond Hill, the ward I represent, is when you said you went out to consult some groups in Morley, I thought, why we got missed out, you know, so you went out that offside, so, yeah, I know. And it's good to see councillors go up in the audience as well actually, and whose passion, you know, with this scheme as well, so, yeah.
I can answer that. The group that I consulted with in Morley was the wheelchair basketball team, and so they had very specific questions around accessibility and sports. They invited me to come and see them because they wanted to be included in the consultation, and that was through the work that I did with Leeds Disability Hub where we put an offer to disability groups, particularly the sports groups, for me to come and speak to them.
Okay, thank you, very comprehensive replies. Councillor Finnegan, you have a question?
Thank you. I declare an interest, it may or may not be punitive or otherwise, that I am a season ticket holder for Huddersfield Town and have been for many, many years. I'm sure that will not prejudice my judgment in any shape, way or form, but I also represent the Morley North Ward, and Elland Road begins in Morley, in the Morley North Ward. Now, we haven't been asked at all about this expansion of the stadium. To the best of my knowledge, my community, which lives adjacent to the stadium, haven't been asked or consulted in any shape, way or form. Now, I'm sure if we had been asked, as ward members and as a community that is impacted upon by the stadium, the points that we would have raised are that we are supportive of the fact that the stadium needs to get bigger. I'm reflecting the views of my residents now, not necessarily my own personal point of view at this point. It's great to see Leeds having all the success that it's having at this point. It does need to be a Yorkshire club that has a significant stadium primarily to make sure that Yorkshire clubs are promoted nationally and internationally. What we would say, if we'd been consulted, would be that we have significant issues on match day because of where the parking goes, because the parking does go onto many of our estates, and we would welcome a conversation about how we might explore minimising that particular impact, and whether that's via condition or whatever, and I'm sure we'll get to that at an appropriate time, to see whether a residents-only parking scheme needs to be introduced, because clearly...
Councillor Finnegan, you are straying on to the application here. So we're just talking about consultation.
Yes, I accept that. Points I would raise is that if we had been consulted Chair, we'd also talk about the White Rose Station that is likely to have a significant impact that is in the Morley North Ward and the White Rose, which is also in the Morley North Ward. So I'm just saying, it'd be nice to be asked.
Okay, thank you, but can we not get into the detail of the application, please?
I think it's difficult without having to go to every single ward in the city to be able to consult with everything.
We're adjacent, we're not every ward, we're adjacent.
No, I know.
We're closer than we're...
I can do, I can do, I can do a analysis of the consultation responses, and there was a significant number from Morley. I recognise that there wasn't a particular pop-up event in Morley, but people from Morley did attend the public exhibition, and I'll be happy to share that data with you if it's of relevance. I did, I have actually got a list of the postcode area and Morley was represented. Their public exhibition that was held over two days at Elland Road was widely publicised, it was in the press, it was on social media, like I said, 3,000 letters went out, it was highly publicised. And I think the attendance really reflects that, and, you know, it was constant people attending all day, and they came from all parts of the city. So I am confident that the message went out very clearly within the city that that exhibition was open to the public. I'll be really happy to share with you the numbers that came from Morley, or those who shared. Not everybody wanted to tell me their postcodes, but those people who did, I can get that detail. If you do have any specific groups you want me to come out and talk to, I'll be really happy, just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just add, just in relation to the car parking, and I'll decline interest here because I'm a Huddersfield Town season ticket holder as well, but anyway. But anyway, car parking issues, those have been dealt with in the planning submission. There's a survey piece. I won't go into any detail about it. But I think if councillor Finnegan has a look at that, and if there's anything that rises out of that, then I think that's something that we can talk about further.
We'll request a briefing. Thanks.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. councillor Blackburn, councillor Finnegan, could you just turn your microphone off? Sorry, thank you.
I'll watch what I'm saying here, because part of the problem that for a million rolls in my ward. But what I've got to say is that I think that the club has made efforts to try and consult. They had it at Dragon Pub, where is the area where we have the parking issue, and got quite a good response, I think, from people there. It just concerns me though that there will be other people who haven't been consulted, and obviously, they need to comment on the planning application. But I won't go any further. But as I say, as consultations go, yours wasn't that.
Praise indeed again. This is a good meeting. Excellent, right. Okay, councillor Maloney, I had you next.
Ellen Road is definitely in my ward. I'm really impressed with the number of community groups, and especially in our ward. So thank you for that, for managing to get so many small little groups. And especially with the, I don't think we get many consultations that end up going directly to women and girls. So again, thank you for that. But what has that looked like? So when you were in those consultations, was it more that you were getting a vibe of what the atmosphere, each of the kind of the feelings of being a woman or a girl going to an event? Or is there kind of physical things that were being requested from women and girls about what they would want the stadium to have? I don't know whether it's for safety or inclusion. Like what was that specifically looking like with women and girls?
It was interesting. We did it through the Leeds United Foundation. They didn't necessarily concentrate on the fact they were a woman or a girl. It was mainly girls, but they did bring parents with them. They were very supportive. I think there was a general feeling, not just within that group, but some of the other groups, that they would like to see some of the hospitality facilities to be less alcohol-centric. And I know that's something that, you know, they're looking at through the improved fan experience. So there was those kind of comments. There were also comments around having places where people can meet that aren't necessarily connected to alcohol establishments. So in the public realm, could the public realm be something where people could congregate safely and together? So they were the kind of comments. I wouldn't say there was anything that was, came out of that particular women's and girls' session, which was very particular to that group. I think it was interesting that some of those feelings were shared amongst a lot of the groups that we spoke to.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Jones.
Just a quick one that interests me, is did anybody ever mention the fact that the women's team don't play at Ellen Road? And the advent of women's football and how fast it's growing? I'm just interested to know if that was raised. I'd be very surprised if it wasn't, to be honest.
Let me think. I mean, we tried to stick to very much the planning application. So it might have been raised a couple of times, but obviously, it wasn't in relation to the planning application. I think what I did notice, that not just through the women and girls' session, but all the sessions, there was a really good representation of women and girls who came and who were supporters or members of the community who wanted to feed into the consultation. I don't know whether you'd necessarily have seen that 10 or 15 years ago. I think it was certainly clear to me during the public exhibition as well.
That's great, thank you. If there are no more questions, are there any more before we move on? No? Okay, well, I'd like to thank you for coming and presenting the findings of the public consultation, really interesting. So thank you. I'm going to ask councillor Scots and councillor Hague to come to the table now and to inform of your concerns regarding the consultation. Thank you. Okay, thank you both. Can I just remind you, we can only discuss the consultation that's been undertaken and not the planning application? Okay, as we have that live at the moment. Okay, I'll hand over to you now. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. Can we just, maybe we could take the slide down? I don't think we need it, if that's okay with you, Chair. So first, I'd like to start by thanking Leeds United for doing a comprehensive consultation. In addition to what Lucinda said, she's also went to a couple of home visits for houses that were in the shadow of the club, which is good. You'll all remember the points that I made at the last planning meeting. And I think those, from the people I've spoken to, those four points very, very much still stand. I won't go through them line by line again like I did last time, but I think those four points that I made are really important. But I would say, having spoken to hundreds of people over the last few weeks that live in my ward, including, as you would expect from a local councillor, some door-knocking sessions, that some additional points. And my second point last time was about the parking situation, which has been picked up. And I think one of the things that stood out to me in those conversations was that a lot of the conversation from the planning's perspective has been a no-worse situation is what they're aiming for. But I think ultimately, residents want a better situation. So they would say there's already an issue here. We need it to get better, not worse. So just a no detriment position, in my view, based on the people I've spoken to, wouldn't be an acceptable outcome. And I think that's really important. And then the other thing is around access to the heaths. So there's an area of housing which is right, comes right off Ellen Road and right outside the stadium. And on match days, at the moment, those are closed off for a number of hours because Ellen Road is really busy. And so there's something around, if the stadium expands, particularly if there's extended usage, there's a concern from some residents they'll end up being sort of stuck, as it were, from car access instead of for a period just before and just after the match, for a longer period. So I think that thinking needs to be fed into it. The third point I made last time was around the environment. And we talked about air pollution as well as litter. And one of the things that people said to me again and again was that sadly, they see some fans urinating in public on the way out. And I just think there's no excuse for that, given there's many pubs where you can freely use the toilets. In the past, the club has made a commitment to issue lifelong bans to people who identify having, doing that. And I think that would be a commitment that I'd welcome them to continue making. And then there's one other point that's come out, which I didn't raise last time. And this is about making sure the club is joined up with the council's plans for the land surrounding area. And as you know, there's a lot of parking on the area around it. And people are nervous that the thinking has to be joined up. So we can't have a plan that just talks about the stadium. It has to, we have to be cognisant of what's going to happen in the future and the land around it. That's what people have said. I can see, I'm doing my best not to talk about the application itself.
Yeah, please just stick to the consultation.
But people did say there's a real desire to make sure the application does take into account those points. So I think, rather than going through everything I said last time, those were the sort of additional points that talking to people over the last few weeks has come out to me. And now I'm going to pass over to councillor Hague to make some points about the Farnley and Worthy side of the consultation.
Yeah, thank you. And we do welcome the opportunity to have this proactive consultation by Leeds United. And Farnley and Worthy was included quite extensively in that, including the BBC coming to the Dragon Pub and creating a podcast there. I think it's called Don't Go to Bed Just Yet Podcast, which is the Leeds United podcast with voices from the community in that. And, you know, the points that residents are making are about, you know, how parking is managed, how traffic is managed. And the point councillor Scott said about, you know, the current situation isn't acceptable. People struggle on match days. So we would like to see, you know, we know that people would like to see that an improvement in the situation. And, you know, that's going to be for a number of things. That's about planning, having a travel plan in place. And we've met with the travel plan consultant. But also about ensuring that, you know, we're making people obey the rules around parking and being considerate as possible because the current situation is quite chaotic. And as councillor Scott said, it must be robust for the future. People do know and have known throughout this consultation that plans for the area will change the nature of the area considerably. That's out for consultation at the moment, a separate consultation. And so they do have concern that match day will happen in a situation where there isn't the capacity there is now. So that future capacity, I think, has been quite widely addressed in the consultation. And that's something that must be taken into account. The jobs and skills, my residents would very much like to benefit from that and have raised that. And that wider community benefit, I know councillor Scott referred to Beetham and Holbeck benefiting, but I think there is scope to widen that to other wards nearby because people do want to feel and belong to the Leeds United community. I think that's everything I need to say about the consultation. But I would say that it has been a real example of making a real effort to hear the views of local people, and we do welcome that.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll now invite questions from members. But can I remind members, it is only about the consultation and not the actual application? So do I have any questions from members? No? Oh, sorry, councillor Khan.
Thank you councillor Scott and councillor Hague for coming this afternoon. In your opinion, is there any community missed or any organisation missed in your wards? Do you reckon there not been approached for consultation?
That's a really good question, councillor Khan. I think it's inevitable that someone hasn't heard about the consultation. I guess my view, which I've been asked on the spot, is that there has been opportunity for everyone to attend a consultation. So it was in the local newspaper, it has been on social media, there have been letters. And so I would say that the people immediately surrounding the club have 100% had a chance to communicate. And then the wider community has had the opportunity. I guess the reality is you can never get everyone. And so there may well be a group that feels disenfranchised. But I think it wouldn't be the fault of the club in this instance.
And just to add, I think, you know, that obviously, the full plans are in now for consultation. There is further opportunities. So if we do find groups that want to make further comments, then they do have that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? No. Okay, I'd like to thank you for coming today and giving us your presentation. Thank you. I am going to ask members for any comments. I don't think there will be, judging by the discussion we've had. But I will ask any comments. Is that councillor Siri?
Obviously, you know, it's been quite a good consultation. But just a comment really, 675 hard copies and only 381 online. Considering the way the council's trying to get more online, it just proves that hard copies are getting a better response. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, interesting stats, absolutely. I think that's reflecting in the consultation, that people have been given that paper copy at the events, yeah. Any other comments? Okay, right, well, thank you, everybody. Thank you to everyone who's come to present to us. Thank you to Matt. I know it's an ongoing consultation now, the application is live. So we will be revisiting this at a future plans panel. So that concludes today's business. Thank you for attending, everybody, and your contributions and watching online. And just to remind you that the next meeting is on Thursday, the 7th of August. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.